They've been struck due to recent disastrous level. We have all these things in your name, Jesus Christ, I will.
And that.
Next time on the end of public comment. To the board. Uh, the next item on the agenda is the approval of the minutes from our February twenty-third meeting. Are there any changes the board wishes to make to the minutes we're receiving? There are no changes. We have a motion to accept the minutes as received.
So move.
Second.
Motion from Mr. Glasgow and second from Mr. Kirkendall. Is there any discussion? Here you know, once again, I'll conduct a roll call vote. Please answer with a yea or nay response. When I call your name, Mr. Cook.
Yay.
Mr. Finn.
Yay.
Mr. Glasgow.
Yay.
Mr. Summer.
Yay.
Mr. DuVose.
Yay.
Mr. Kirkendall.
Yay.
The chair votes yay, and the motion passes when you have a vote. But the next item on the agenda is the presentation of our audit. So I'll now get the floor to Mr. Aaron Strickland for this presentation.
So much. Appreciate you guys having me um here again tonight. We have been doing this several years, and so it's great to see some familiar faces, but some new faces around the table as well. Um, first and foremost, I'd just like to thank the authority for your choices, Wayne Brown. We recognize that's a point, and we appreciate your partnership. Um, want to thank Philip and his team, as well as Jimmy um for their assistance as we completed our audit. In front of you tonight, you have drafts of the financial statements. We've not received final approval yet, and so um we don't expect a lot of changes, but wanted to go ahead and go over those with you. Um, if you'll open up your table of contents, lays out for you what all is included in the drafts. You have your independent auditors' report along with what we call your exhibits, which includes management discussion and analysis, along with your statement of net position, which is like a balance sheet, your statement of revenues, expenses, and changes in that position, cash flows, and notes to the financial statements. And then you have some schedules, which also assist in explaining the financial statements. You've got your combining schedules of net position, which are your funds, all of your funds totaling up across, as well as your schedule of revenue expenses and changes in positions by funds. You've got um your schedule of allocations, um your schedule of compliance, and then you've also got some pension and some OPEB schedules in four, five, and excuse me, five, six, and seven. So that's what's included here. Um, I like to tell people the only piece of paper in this draft of financial statements, and then once they're issued, is just our audit report. Um, the rest of it is yours, and we are just coming in and applying on your financial statements. We do assist you in drafting them, but they're they're yours. Um, the audit is set up to be a clean opinion. Um, if that translates to, in our terminology, what we call an unqualified opinion, which sounds strange, but it means there are no qualifications to our opinion. Um, so a clean audit um report is expected. So flip over beyond that, you come into exhibit A, page one, and this is the start of the management discussion and analysis. This is basically the narrative that takes you through the financial statements and highlights during the year. Um, Jimmy and Philip worked together um to submit some information that's also included in here. So um some people are more um, you know, we all learn differently, and um so the information is presented in several different ways. Um, so there's that. As opposed to reading it to you, I'm going to jump into the numbers with the exhibit, and we'll look at those and just know that you can refer back to this for some high-level um sort of overview of of what's going on during the year and the the ending numbers. So if you'll go ahead and turn over with me to um exhibit B, page one, this is the asset side of the statement of net position. You can see it down at the bottom. You've got total assets of roughly forty-four million. Um, we'll begin up at the top, and I'll walk through what all um those are comprised of, beginning with your cash and cash equivalents of twelve points um seven million. You're up um a little bit over last year, and there's a statement of cash flow that will walk through that more thoroughly, so I'll I'll get to that in a minute to discuss that. Um, but then you've um also got um some investments as well, the one-point-one million, and then the gross revenue fund has two-hundred-and-fifty-thousand in it, and you see that down as non-current CD stretch is out beyond three um, maybe beyond the year. The um, keep in mind that your cash is set aside across funds, and so you have that designated for various things in other funds, and this includes a set aside in the post-retirement um, the benefit obligations fund of one-point-seven million set aside there along with the investments are set aside in that fund as well. So that's important to keep in mind when you're looking at your cash, that it's allocated out amongst funds and were designated for particular purposes. Your accounts receivable of one-point-two million is right on par with um the prior year. You have pre-pays this year of a hundred-and-sixty-five-thousand almost. Didn't have any last year. You have an insurance policy. That's the full insurance policy for the year, and it was paid just before year-end. Sometimes the timing of that flips on us, and sometimes it's paid um right there in November, and so it's expensed during the year, and so it's all set up as a prepaid because it's paid right before year-end. You can see that your inventories of one-point-one million are right on par with last year as well. There's a footnote that shows the breakdown of that that we'll get to in a minute. So your total current assets of sixteen-point-four million, that's slightly over sixteen-point-one from last year. And then you have what's called your non-current assets, which are basically your property and your equipment. You can see it's made up of a um variety of things, the biggest of which being your T and D system. Um, overall, you've got total gross assets of fifty-four, just over fifty-four million, and those are up um a little bit over last year. You can see as well about nine-hundred-thousand or so. Then you have accumulated depreciation where we're depreciating these off, so you've got a net book value of about twenty-seven million. As I mentioned, there's that um CD in the gross revenue fund, two-hundred-and-fifty-thousand. And have um some additionally, the 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 way the post-retirement um benefit obligations are recorded as it relates to your state retirement, you're going to have deferred outflows, deferred inflows, as well as the liability itself. And so that's seven-hundred-and-eighty-one-thousand is part of the deferred outflows. And so the total of all these come down to um your total assets and deferred outflow resources of forty-four-point-five million. Any questions on the assets? So turn over to page two of exhibit E with me. This is going to be um your liabilities side and um as well as your net asset side of the balance sheet. If you notice, the two of them um match up with one another. So you've got total current liabilities of um almost three-point-eight million. You've got non-current liabilities of about ten million, or total liabilities of almost fourteen million. In those current liabilities, you've got a variety of things up in the first section. You have your accounts payable, which is down a little bit, and that will fluctuate depending on what's going on right at year-end. Um, last year-end, if you'll recall, you all were still working um pretty well into spending down um your bond um monies. And so as you did that, you were, it resulted in some pretty substantial payables at year-end, and so that accounts for the majority of the decrease. Your accrued liabilities is going to be primarily payroll um in nature, and that's going to vary a lot just based on the calendar and when pay is paid out and how that marries up with year-end. Um, they'll tax payables relatively consistent. You've got um accrued licenses that you um are paying relative to some smaller communities around, and that decreased because you can see it went twenty-two thousand the year before is primarily due to a decrease um with Cross Hill. Everyone else stayed relatively the same. The unearned revenue is a pretty substantial number at four-hundred-and-forty-two-thousand roughly. These are your budget pays. These are people that have paid ahead, and if you think in terms of your year-end being October, that's right before you're about to go into your heating season, and so as those are paid, you're collecting, and then you will, you know, the gas will come, and then that revenue will be making. So that gets reported as a liability to begin with. You've got um your compensated assets. This is your burden between short-term and long-term. You'll see some down below in the non-current section. These relate to your sick pay and your vacation pay policies and what's accrued relative to that based on your current employees and what's due to them, or they is available for them to take um that they've earned. You've also got customer deposits, um two-hundred-and-ninety-two-thousand completely consistent with the prior year. And then you'll also see um the payables out to the cities as well as your capital lease obligation, your current portion, and then you also have a small long-term portion that goes along with that. And then you, the the last item in your current liabilities is your um revenue bonds payable. And that's broken between current and long-term. Of course, this is principal only, until you can see that. Um, so for a total of current liabilities of roughly almost three-point-eight million. So then down in the non-current, we've sort of already talked about the compensated absences and the capital lease and the bonds payable. You also have the actuarial portion that is the obligation of the authority relative to your retirement pension, as well as your other post-employment benefit obligation, which the abbreviation that you hear folks use with that, it's called OPEB, and that's going to be your insurance, and those also grew during the year. And that's going to fluctuate a good bit based on those actuarial calculations based on the market's doing, what your um, the makeup of your employer, employ your employee base in your retirement base. So total liabilities of about thirteen-point-eight million, got some deferred inflows relative to the pension liability, and then um I'm getting, you can see your net position. You have thirty-million, twenty-three-point-four million of that is relative to your capital assets. So basically, your C and D fund less your bond fund, and then unrestricted of seven million. But keep in mind that a lot of that is set aside in various um in your different funds or designated for purposes of ongoing use of the authority. You you would have your expansion fund, your retention fund, your benefit obligation fund, all these, the pension um OPEB that we spoke about, as well as reserves set aside in your gross revenue and in your O and M fund for ongoing operations. Any questions there on the net position? Um, moving over to the statement of revenues and change expenses and changes in that position, this is just a high-level income statement, basically. Um, you've got your operating revenues. At the top, they're broke out, broken out between gas sales, customer service, and other for a total of eighteen-point-seven million roughly. You're down a little bit over last year. That mainly is attributable to the gas sales being down, and that's mainly attributable to the cost of gas, more than anything. You've got operating expenses totaling sixteen-point-five million. Those are down as well. Um, but you'll note in large part, they're down due to the cost of gas old decreasing, which um allowed you to hold your margin at about forty-five percent from the sale of the gas. You've got your customer service um expenses that are up a little bit, or other operating expenses that are up slightly, maintenance expense with steady. That that expense drops slightly depreciation up a little bit, so just minor fluctuations there. The primary fluctuation being that cost of gas dropping at the same rate as the cost of sales, allowing you to maintain probably the same. So um, then you come down into your non-operating revenues and expenses, all roughly the same. You're going to see your interest expense on the bonds there, um some investment income on the CDs and the cash that's in reserves, as well as um the miscellaneous income, also disposable assets, those kind of things. Down to the bottom, you see that line that changed in that position. You can see your net position increased by about six-hundred-and-thirty-four-thousand. Um, and that the decrease over last year of about eight-hundred-and-twenty-seven-thousand. Any questions? Um, the the next um statement, um statement of cash flows, and I like to say this is my favorite statement. Um, that all is coming, will be on you. Um, and a lot of people get overwhelmed by this because they don't really understand a statement of cash flows, but it basically is showing where your money's coming in and where it's going out and how it's been used um during the course of the year. And one of the best things that you can do to tell um if a business or um an operating unit, which is what you guys are, is viable, is if you look at that net cash provided by operating activities. You want to make sure that that's positive so that the operations of the authority can um continue on an ongoing basis. So that's great that they are. There was a decrease of about four-hundred-thousand there over last year. Then you're going to move into your other um outflows and inflows of activities. You've got your um cash flows, your outflows related to your um financing activities. You can see that those totaled one-point-six, one-point-seven million. Um, they're down significantly. The cash used in opera um in financing, they're down significantly because you spent down the majority of your bond during ten-thirty-one nineteen. And so that's reflected there in that two-point-nine of acquisition and construction of capital assets, and you can see that dropped to right under a million this year at nine-thirty-five. And this also reflects your principal paid on the bonds, which is consistent. Do you have um a capital lease on the book relative to some computer equipment? Does that get kind of reported this way since it's a capital lease? Consider financing activities. Then you've also got investing activities. You see those cash provided by the investing activities, and that's just because you freed up some cash that was being held in a CD. So you freed it up from investments and moved it back into cash that was available for operations. So that's why you see that play kind of flip the other way. We moved some money into a CD in nineteen, and we pulled it back out. So that's a flip flop there. You can see that you had an overall increase in cash um for the year. Um, but again, that was mainly attributable to just the moving of the CD between cash and. The total cash at the end of the year of the twelve-point-seven, twelve-point-eight million. But again, most of it allocated out to the other funds for um various uses that the board seeks to create. Any questions? Um, if you look at page two, it's kind of the second page of the cash flow statement. It shows you um a different way to look at how um cash was provided by um operations. And so that's also a useful um tool to look at your different increases and decreases in your asset and non-cash items. Then you get to the section um exhibit E, which is all the notes to the financial statements, and they go on for quite a few pages. And so I'm just going to skim through and point out some of the highlights to you. Um, note one basically is a summary of all your significant accounting policies. So it's a good place to look if you're curious, oh, how does that get accounted for? I don't quite understand that. It's a good resource to illuminate how things are accounted for. One thing I would point out, if you're on page three in note F about accounts receivable, would like to point out that you have um an allowance for bad debt on the books, that's sixty-thousand, so your current accounts receivable is reduced for that reserve, and it decreased over the prior year. Note G on page three as well begins talking about your capital assets. And you'll notice in the first paragraph, it talks about um you're having a capitalization threshold, which is normal and routine um in in the world of business. Your capitalization threshold is five-thousand dollars. I've spent some time talking with Jimmy and talking with Philip about what does that mean? And and how do we use that on a practical, practical basis? So basically, if you think about having a capitalization threshold, it's so that you aren't capitalizing things that are long-lived. So um like, for example, a a chair that's going to be around for a while, but if it's less than five-thousand dollars an individual, we just expense it because there is um accounting work that has to go on to capitalize and depreciate. And so the IRS's threshold, Internal Revenue Service threshold for audited entities, it's five-thousand dollars. So you guys adopted that a couple of years ago. So what does this mean as you're replacing and repairing um capital assets? So to the letter of the capitalization policy, anything that would be under five-thousand individually would be expensed. However, we know that as you all work on this T and D system, there are sections that need to be repaired um and enhanced and and those type of things. And so we've talked in terms of when you're doing work like that, that's sort of grouped together, and it's a big project, although there may be spend on the project that's below five-thousand dollars, you're going to look at that whole project as one big item. And of course, that would be above the capitalization threshold and would capitalize that. And um, so I'm happy to provide more guidance on that as we need to. I think it's an important way for you guys to look at things um in the sense that it is important that you reflect all the assets of the authority, and you all spend um a good deal of time and money investing into the system to make sure that it is operational for your customers. Um, and so capturing those such that they're reflected um over the long term on your financial statements, I think is also important. You know, Jimmy had wanted me to touch.
Ever. That that covered it. I just wanted to, you know, have that re-conversation and talk about, you know, the the assets, current assets aging out, being replaced under.
Yeah. And there's been a lot, there's been a lot um of talk lately, a couple of years, about three or four years ago, the IRS came out with new repairs regulations, and they got much more aggressive in saying, um, you think about a repair, well, I just fixed it. So out of expensive repair, it's still the asset itself, but they've become more aggressive in what actually gets capitalized. So this this would be consistent with that as well. Yep. Um, okay, let's see. Let's flip on through. Note two, so note one, with the summary of accounting principles, um goes all the way through page six. And then note two, that's up there on page six. I would like to note, um, I think it's important um that your bank balance, your cash that is in the banks is either fully insured and collapsed or both fully insured and collapsed. So that's an important thing to note. You all have um accounts that work to make sure that that happens above that FDIC limit. Note three, talk about your snippets of closet. Note four on page seven is your inventory. I think what I was talking about, the statement of net position, I mentioned, there was a footnote that would show the breakdown. You've got, your inventory is made up of um parts and appliances as well as natural gas. And um then you've got an allowance, um a reserve for potential um parts or appliances that may be out of spec or out of date for a net of one-point-one-three million there. And that natural gas amount fluctuates up and down based on on the value of the decaparks that you're in. Note five walks you through your capital assets in greater detail. It's going to show you your additions and disposals for the year, both for um nineteen and twenty. Note six walks you through on page nine, your um bond, um your revenue bond that payable there and has a maturity schedule, so you can see how those are paid out, both in principal and interest. So that's useful information um as far as your commitments go. Note seven talks about the capital lease obligation. Again, the principal portion is important, but this is going to show you what the principal and interest are going to do on that lease. So that listed there. Note eight talks about your allocations and gives greater detail with that. Note nine starts on page ten about the pension and continues on until age. I think it's job security. That's what I think it is. It continues on to page twenty. And then note ten picks up with your post-employment benefits other than pensions, which is the OPEB or the health insurance. And that continues on for a couple of pages and give you all kinds of good information that is gleaned from the state retirement reports primarily. Um, and that comes on um to page twenty-four and finishes that there. So um I'm just going to skip over that unless anybody's got any specific questions about those, and I'm always available to you after the fact to answer any questions. Okay, um, note eleven talks about your natural gas purchase contracts, and we disclose that as an upcoming commitment. It's not um, it's it's not accrued on the book, so you don't see that commitment in your liability, but it is important that it's footnoted or noted that you have those contracts. Um, we're also required to note any concentrations. You didn't have any customers that rose above ten percent, so no concentrations there, which is um fine. Um, you do have concentration with your gas purchases, obviously, and that is reasonable and expected. Um, you've got fifty-four percent of that coming of all your total purchases coming from one vendor. Um, note thirteen talks through your operating leases. You're going to have the capital leases, which you've already mentioned, and then the operating leases. Operating leases just get listed as um commitments, and those are for various pieces of all. Note fourteen discusses your related parties. The only related party known um that's reflected here is the Fort Hill, and that relationship is documented in. Note fifteen um is a supplemental footnote um information about the cash flow statement. And then note sixteen is the final footnote, talking about subsequent events. There are no real subsequent events that are known being disclosed here, however, there is a blanket sort of subsequent event that you'll see pretty much in all financial statements, still just relative to the ongoing impact of COVID and not knowing how that might impact the business. We're still putting this in all of our financial statements, and so just sort of a general statement there about that. So that covers the notes. Any other questions? Um, okay, uh, then your schedules, I hope everybody's packed their glasses. Um, you've got your statement of net position by fund, and again, your funds are growth revenue, operation and maintenance, contingency and depreciation, expansion, cash retention, bond and interest, and benefit obligations. And so this just basically shows the net position that I went over in total, broken out by all the different funds. So that's listed there for you, and then schedule two goes through the same thing, but for the statement of revenue expenses and changes in that position. You'll see that on schedule two by all the same funds. Um, and as you would imagine, your first revenue and your operation and uh, I mean, your, yeah, your operation and maintenance are really sort of your operating unit of the business, where you're selling all the gas and where you're paying for everything out of it. They're sort of split into those funds, and so that's why you see all the revenue kind of coming into gross revenue and the majority of all the expenses coming out in operation and maintenance. Any questions on that? Schedule three is your schedule of allocations and um how things are budgeted and distributed. Schedule four is your bond compliance and and walked through that bond compliance and how that works as dictated by the revenue bond. And then schedule five, six, and seven are additional schedules that are required to comply with the way um your pension um is disclosed and footnoted. So schedule five and six are with um your retirement, your state retirement PIBA. And then schedule seven is basically the same information, but for the OPEB or the other post um retirement obligation. And that brings you to the financial statement. What questions can I ask? Well, thank you so very much for allowing me to be with you tonight. Um, certainly appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Oh, yes, sir. Just one second. I'm trying to get this type back up. It goes strong growth for this twenty-twenty company. Very well in light of very hard times because of COVID, of increase, of customer effort from this process. So that we work for that to maintain a good strong business through through the process. We also would like to uh go ahead and um make um make mention that based on the audit reports, go ahead and uh request the board to put motion the excess revenue split in regards to the excess revenue.
The authority staff has recommended that the board vote to distribute the excess revenues among the cities of Clinton and Newbury to complete the fiscal year twenty-twenty audit that's presented. Do we have a motion to do so?
So move.
Kirkendall, we have a second.
Second.
Second from Mr. Finn. It's a easy discussion. Here you know, conduct a roll call vote. Please answer with a yea or nay response when I call your name. Mr. Kirkendall.
Yay.
Mr. Finn.
Yeah.
Mr. DuVose.
Yay.
Mr. Summer.
Yay.
Mr. Glasgow.
Yay.
Mr. Finn.
Yeah.
I played on this line.
Yes, sir.
I did. Yeah, I lead up. I left that somewhere. I knew that.
Yay.
The chair votes yay, and the motion passes when you have a vote. Uh, the next item on the agenda is the operating reports. It's time to get the floor to. Okay.
So in addition to that, in the excess revenue funds that were available there, the the authority does make recommend they can just forward consider and approve the uh the authority to pay COVID relief bonds to each employee in the amount of one-hundred dollars of that excess revenue.
If we need to blow on that off. Let me go ahead and finish the first one. Have you finished?
Yeah.
Okay. All right, the board has also been asked to consider a thirty-seven thousand-dollar COVID relief package for the employees of the Newbury Natural Gas Authority. Do we have a motion to do so?
So move.
Motion for Mr. Glasgow. We have a second.
Second.
Second from Mr. Summer.
That's all, I think.
Here you know, I will once again do a roll call vote. Please answer with a yea or nay response when I call your name. Mr. Cook.
Yay.
Let me be off this. Mr. Kirkendall.
Yay.
Mr. DuVose.
Yay.
Mr. Summer.
Yay.
Mr. Glasgow.
Yay.
Mr. Finn.
Very.
The chair votes yay, and that motion also passes when you have a vote. Now, next item on the agenda is the operating report. Best time I'll give the floor to our general manager, Mr. Jimmy Cap, for the operating report.
Thank you, sir. Good evening, gentlemen. Few times dedicated to the authority. So run through the highlights, the operating report for February. In February, our gas sales were up slightly. We did experience declines in the majority of our customer categories, but due to the cold weather that we experienced in February, we did see some added muted in our revenue.
But due to the cold weather that we experienced in February, we did see some added heat in our residential and small commercial customer basis. The authority delivered twenty-five thousand five hundred more D T's this February to residential and small customers than we did last February. This was a nineteen percent increase over the previous year. February gas sales ended the month at three hundred forty-one thousand one hundred and thirty-eight D T's, which was about three thousand more D T's in the same period. This increase in the gas delivered, again, was due to the cold weather we experienced in February. February, we saw five hundred and ninety-nine heating degree days during the month. This was slightly above the norm. And a hundred and four heating degree days higher than February of twenty twenty. Anyone see this information that I just gave you on the heating degree days through the national weather? Customer service was up in all categories for the month. We want to make you aware or remind you that February was a four-week payroll month. Revenue were greater than our expenses for the month, and we experienced a net gain in February of five hundred sixty-two thousand seven hundred and ninety-one dollars. The authority did experience a dramatic increase in the overall expenses in February. That increase over last year was three hundred ninety-two thousand nine hundred fifty-seven dollars. That increase was due to the added cost of the gas. I want you to keep in mind that during the cold weather events of February, that was some of the same weather systems that, you know, those parts of the country like Texas experienced where there was gas shortages. Production was down. That shortage increased the cost, the availability and the supply of gas throughout the country, which elevated the price. As a whole, the authority would suit this event well based on sound hedging practices. Aaron mentioned a few minutes ago of the hedging in the winter time to our fifty cents D, fifty cents D T. On the gas we hedge and that was, you know, if we were able to manage the gas cost for our customers based on blocking those rates. Growth revenue fund and total gas sold again was three hundred forty-one thousand one hundred thirty-eight D T's. Also, the gas purchase was one million four hundred thirty-five thousand one hundred and ninety-four dollars. Total gas sales for February was two million five hundred ninety-four thousand one hundred and twenty-three dollars. The excess growth revenue in February was five hundred sixty-two thousand seven hundred ninety-one dollars, which is lower than February of twenty twenty by two hundred thirty-one thousand five hundred and fifty-nine dollars. Excess revenues in the growth revenue fund year to date through February is two million six hundred three thousand nine hundred and seventy-six dollars. This reflects an increase of a hundred and twenty-five thousand two hundred and seventy-four dollars as compared to where we were at in February at the end of February twenty twenty. Customer service bill for the month was seventy-eight thousand nine hundred and seventy-seven dollars. This is up almost twenty-nine thousand dollars over the same period last year. This increase is directly attributed to a larger number of appliance sales and installation work performed in February. Other revenues collected in February told forty thousand four hundred and eight dollars, which is up compared to twenty twenty. Things on investments again remain down by residents, bad debt collected, cut on fees and penalties did increase slightly during the month. As far as operating expenses, again, our gas cost was up three hundred nineteen thousand dollars compared to last year, just again with due to the. The supply issues coming with the weather event out of Texas. Total cost of our customer service was up more than thirty-seven thousand dollars over the same period last year. The total expense in this category of two hundred four thousand one hundred and forty-four dollars. And again, this was offset by the increased revenue. The total maintenance costing increased to a hundred thirteen thousand five hundred and seventy-seven dollars due to several system replacements. That's. And repairs that had to be performed under contracted services with total thirty-six thousand three hundred and forty-eight dollars. In addition, we also saw in those projects, our material expense climbed slightly in the months of ten thousand four hundred and thirty-six dollars. Pipeline integrity expenses for the month was ten thousand one hundred and eighteen dollars, which were paid to even the circuits for engineering work. Formed update O M manual and transmission integrity management plans. Total maintenance expense was thirty thousand eight hundred and forty-six dollars. That's thirty thousand eight hundred and forty-six dollars higher than February of twenty twenty. And reason for that being higher this month, probably the expense in different ones. The authority is speaking, you know, some funding to help offset some of these unexpected costs outside of the annual budget. How, as one reason we had Aaron mention to you about what the capital structure, the capital plans were. Because as we go forward with these types of projects, they meet that threshold, we're going to look to not expense those in the operating expenses. So you with an actual request for capital dollars to to take some points of the system that have been retired. Any questions so far? Our other operating expenses remain below or flat in most of the categories. My exceptions to that are as follows. Truck and vehicle expense were approximately. Thirty-five hundred dollars higher than last year. That did include an engine replacement on the inspector truck in Newberry. Liability insurance remained up again this month as well. If you remember the last several months, we've been making mention of that being higher because we're expensing monthly versus the one month. Yeah, and overall content remains up due to COVID cleaning protocol. Off the equipment rent. This past month, six thousand six hundred and thirty-five dollars. That's for the rent on the printer and the bill insert. These are billed quarterly. All the general supplies were up in February to eleven thousand nine hundred and fifty-six dollars. This is due to. It's expensive to allocate with the procurement and replacement of used materials such as envelopes, bill forms, late notices and other customer mail out notices from our vendors. Capital materials were up during the month at thirteen thousand nine hundred and forty dollars and was allocated with the purchase of new metering equipment for new customer additions. Have contracted services were down during the month at fifteen thousand four hundred and eighty-four dollars. The reason they were down is because we had less services installed in February. We installed a total of nineteen new service lines across the enterprise. Any other questions? All right.
That is. Okay. Next item on the agenda is the board to consider. Purchasing one F two twenty-five hundred series truck at last month meeting, we purchased the. I remember truck to Cooper Motor and we purchased one from Crowley Ford. Ford was not able to deliver the F two fifty series until next year. The next little business was Cooper Motors. So the the authority is asking us to consider the second lowest bid to go ahead and purchase this truck. Cooper Motors. Do we have a motion to do so?
I move.
Motion from the Kirkendall. Cook. I'm sorry. Second, second from Mr. Sam. Is there any discussion? I will conduct a roll call vote then. Mr. Sam.
Yea.
Mr. Glasgow.
Yea.
Mr. Summer.
Yea.
Mr. DuVoy.
Yea.
Mr. Kirkendall.
Refused.
Okay, the chair votes yea. The motion passes to the end of the vote because Kirkendall recusing himself from voting. They're calling the.
Yea.
Okay. Okay. David, we do have a, now, so Kirkendall recusing himself. The next item is the approval funds for the transfer of Highway one forty-six main extension. The gas authority staff has requested that the board approve pulling seven thousand two hundred dollars from the expansion fund to reimburse the gross revenue fund. With spending five hundred sixty feet of gas may on Highway one forty-six for cross anchor. This project needs the authority to pay back with requirement. Spend the main closure to the power cross anchor. Do we have a motion to fund the required?
I'll move. Second.
There's a motion from Mr. Summer. A second from the Kirkendall. Is there any discussion? Is there going, is there predicted growth in that area?
There is. There is some farms, agricultural, some poultry farms in the area already that we may eventually be able to get to. The town across Hill is not, across Anchor is not currently served by anyone for gas. So there's a good many residential. You know, I did a quick look. You're probably looking at getting all the way into the town of Cross Anchor. It's about another four and a half miles past where this extension will be. To get from the closest point on that extension to the chicken farm is about another two, two miles. So you're probably looking at about six miles of main all to get all the way to the chicken farm. But there's a lot of interest in the Cross Anchor community. Full gas or has been for a number of years. I think one of the things we would want to do and take away from this is to. If we continue to make changes within the company, it's put together a program to go out actively. Look for customers that are on our lines to. To not convert and connect to natural gas that are already there, maybe on propane or whatever. But in this community, there's a lot of propane tanks along this route that we could most likely convert if we offer gas to that area. And, you know, with the growth that's coming, you know, south out of Greenville, north out of Columbia. It's just going to be a matter of time. When we get that infrastructure laid, the sooner the better because it's going to come to a certain point in time. It gets more expensive every year with this type of work.
What caught up? Mr. Kirkendall's question. Glad you're looking at that. One thing we've done over the last few years is add a bunch of towns. And we've been real pleased that we're able to do that. Could you maybe, as you go forward, maybe, Mr. Chairman, look, Mr. Kep, price it out? What would it cost to go to Craig? You said six miles. And that may be a little while before we could do that or maybe sooner rather than later, but pull up Cross Anchor. I haven't been that way in a long time. There's a good many houses there.
There is. And there's a couple of other things. Just want to make sure that the board fans that just running the main there is the first big step. But in order to do that, we've got to have enough customers on at the end of that line in town, in the town cross anchor. To actually move enough gas through that system to maintain your odorant, to continue to keep the gas odorized properly. If you put it up there and you only have one or two customers, the odorant's not going to stay in the gas as well. So what we would want to do is make sure we get enough of a customer base in, but we'll be happy to run those numbers. And also, like I said, do the survey to see how many customers we would have interested there. If we can do that, it would definitely make more sense to run it.
Any other questions or discussions? Now, we'll conduct a roll call vote. Please answer with a yea. Your name response when they call your name. Kirkendall.
Yea.
Mr. Summer.
Yea.
Glasgow.
Yea.
Mr. DuVoy.
Yea.
Yea.
Mr. Cook.
Yea.
Chair votes yea and the motion passes to the end of the vote. Next item on the agenda is the approval funds transfer for Wilson Road gas leak. Make an early February gas leak was the cause of Wilson Road in Newberry. For the repair of the leak, it's section of steel may and three service lines needed to be replaced. Existing mains and service lines were replaced. The authority staff has requested the board approve pulling seventy-five hundred. The contingency and depreciation fund to reimburse the gross revenue fund. Any excess remaining in the contingency depreciation fund. Do we have a motion to do so?
I'll move. Second.
Motion for Cook in a second for Mr. Glasgow. Is there any discussion?
What, what happened?
So we do leak surveys every year on our mains and our systems. We found a gas leak on Wilson Road in Newberry and I think it was in front of the general media. And so as I got to investigating the cause of the leak, it was determined that the piping and the pipe work for the leak was that. Had deteriorated to a point that it needed to be replaced. And so a section of main had to be replaced and three services had to be replaced, the three different businesses right there. So this is one of those projects that we were talking about earlier that meets the five thousand dollar threshold that we were looking at expecting against our O N M budget. Where we can come back now and request this money for capital and retire out the existing facility. It's been in for a number of years, however long that will, however long it's been, but it's been appreciated completely away. We can go back, capitalize it and get that asset back in, part appreciation on the asset again. That's what was for. There's a number of those leaks out there that we've identified this way. You'll start seeing more of those come up. And when we dig these up, these are kind of immediate fix type things. It's not something that we're gonna. We're not going to dig it up and it'd be a leak there and wait for a board meeting to come get the approval for the funding. We're going to make repairs once we identify it. Fair. Then come back to look to get by their funding because you just, you can't back up once you expose the leak is coming up. Gas line runs under the roof in a lot of places. It runs under the roof like water, sewer. It does. Yeah.
Any other questions or discussion? Here we now, once again, conduct a roll call vote. Please answer with a yea or nay response. When I call your name, Mr. Cook.
Yea.
Mr. Sam.
Yea.
Mr. DuVoy.
Yea.
Mr. Glasgow.
Yea.
Mr. Kirkendall.
Yea.
Mr. Summer.
Yea.
The chair votes yea and the motion passes to the end of the vote. Uh, the next item on the agenda is approval of the fiscal twenty twenty-one public charge rates. This time on, uh, again, the floor there are general managers.
I think, sir. Gentlemen, the reason for this is because in the backroom, the the new role of general manager. And in asking some of the questions and talking about how how we each were set and formalized. Then we learned that there really wasn't a normal mechanism as a general manager to set this rates. But what we wanted to do is we want to establish one mechanism where we come to the board every year and have those rates presented to the board publicly. And make change and get approval from the board for those rates. I want to back up just a little bit. And we're talking about the twenty twenty-one rate right now. So the way that we're going to proposing to do this and the mechanism that we. Is basing our operate, our rate off of our annual budget. So every year when we do an annual budget. We'll present the budget, we'll get the budget approved. Between that budget being approved and the next monthly meeting, we'll be coming back to you. Or at that next monthly meeting, we'll come back to you with the the matrix. Performed to establish the rate for the upcoming fiscal year. But with that being said, just to give you a little bit of a background, for twenty twenty-one, our total operating expenses is twenty-three million eighty-one thousand nine hundred and forty-six dollars. That's pulled directly from the budget, uh, twenty twenty-one budget. The total budgeted gas expenses for twenty twenty-one is twelve million eight hundred four thousand three hundred and twenty-four dollars. Once we back out the items that don't go against the rates, that's items such as the. Facility charge called to our interruptible company. That's the cost of the appliances that we sell in the open to to our customers. We back those out so that we don't use those dollars to help establish our rate. The, um. Once you back all of that out, the twenty twenty-one operating expense to the actual operational part of the business is eighteen six hundred and seventy-six thousand three hundred and two dollars. We added in five percent for a variance on that is because this is budgeted numbers depending on which way the economy ever flows. We want a little bit of a buffer in there. That come up to a, um. Once you divide, that number came up with the five percent to nine million, one hundred ninety-six thousand eight hundred and eighty dollars. You divide that by the twelve months, seven hundred sixty-six thousand five hundred dollars per month. You apply that to your firm customer base. Our rate is based off of our firm customers, not our interrupt. Cause the interrupter wants to be up or down. You want to capture your operating costs on your firm customer, correct? Do you understand that concept? So if we use a customer base for twenty twenty-one, a thirteen thousand one hundred customer, that was our average number of customers connected from a firm. Load. Leave the per customer expense per month for operating costs. This is not the cost of the gas. This is just the operating cost. Operate the authority and maintain the system of roughly fifty-eight dollars and fifty cents. So we're down to fifty-eight dollars and fifty cents per customer at this point. How do we collect that money? The way that we collect that money is collected through a. The way that we collect that money is collected through a facilities charge. And a facilities charge is applied, you know, through A P B A, the guidelines, the definitions of it. A facility charge is applied to collect a base portion of your operating cost. So we go to use twenty percent in facilities charge, so we want to collect twenty percent of our facilities charge, our operational costs in our facilities charge. Twenty percent of fifty-eight is roughly twelve dollars. So that's our, that's where our facilities charge, we're proposing to you to have a facility charge per month. We're currently at twelve dollars, we're proposing to leave it at twelve dollars. That leaves the other eighty percent of the operational costs of the authority that we need to capture and or collect. So in order to collect that, we look at the firm, deck of firm delivery to our customer. So our customer that are firm customers, not our interruptible customers, again, because that is the one that we're going to stay on year after year, and that's where we base our base. So that eighty percent, once you calculate that number, it comes up roughly six dollars and sixty cents margin on top of every detail of gas that we buy. But that's what we currently use. And it's 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 unique that we came, you know, that that spoke to where we're currently at. You know, I think management, previous management had a very good feel uh what the cost, operating cost could be. And this supports that down to the, down to the dollar. So our proposal to the board is that we go ahead and make the motion and approve for the remainder of twenty twenty-one. Building charge twelve dollars and operational margin on top of each deal of gas, six dollars and sixty cents. We would equate to, you know, you would break it down to the firms. Sixty-six cents per cut, we're on top of what the cost of the firm gas will be. Currently, this coming month, our rates are going to drop again. Uh, based on our calculations, we're going to drop from ninety-three cents a firm down to ninety. Using this type of logic behind them.
I would like to make a motion to accept the absent proposal as it relates to the facility charge and rates going forward.
So.
Glasgow, do we have a second? Second from Mr. Kirk and all, is there any discussion?
Did you bring it to us like that as well?
Sir?
We're, I appreciate you bringing it to us like that as well.
Yes, I I think that's a good um, a good format, a good mechanism to use in nano angle.
Any other discussions, questions? Here now, I'll once again do a conducted roll call vote. Please answer with a yea, your name response when they call your name, Summer.
Yay.
Mr. Kirk and all.
Yay.
Mr. Glasgow.
Yay.
Mr. Devoe.
Yay.
Stan.
Yeah.
Cook.
Yay.
The uh chair votes yea and the motion passes with the MSO. I figured out.
Keep these on our toes.
I won't leave anybody out of this meeting, okay? Uh, I have one more.
Sure, one more second. Just wanted to just add this out too, for those that may be listening. Our rates compared to our peers here in South Carolina, the other authorities as well as uh Piedmont and Dominion. We're basically in the bottom tier of those rates. The other, several of the other companies are higher than us. Uh, and and we just acknowledge you guys, you know, for for the record, what's out there, County Residential year-round rate, it's a dollar seven cents a firm. You know, we came in last month at ninety-three cents. Uh, Fort Hill is a little bit cheaper. Very adjacent to the firm, and the biggest reason for that is that they've spread their costs over a larger customer base. They're they're about three, four times the size we are. Uh, Langs County, which is very similar in size, about twice the size of us, is a dollar and two cents. Piedmont Natural Gas is, you know, in that eighty-five to ninety cents, depending on which state you're in. Uh, in North Carolina, they're a dollar twenty-one cents. The um, in York County, nine and four cents a firm. So just based on that chart that we pulled out and see where we we fall in our rates, but operating the company, our firm rates are really in uh in check with the other authorities and other local gas companies.
Thank you. All right, the next item on the agenda is for the board to complete a request to authorize the general manager to hire global R S revolutions to perform a study on potential risks associated with various exposure levels to radio frequency. Costs associated with pay from the cash retention fund can maybe up to five thousand dollars. Do we have a motion to do so?
I'm moved.
Motion for Mr. Kirk and all, we have a second. Second from Mr. Finn. Is there any questions or discussions concerning this? Here now, I'll once again conduct a roll call vote. Please answer with a yea, your name response when they call your name. Mr. Cook.
Yay.
Mr. Finn.
Yay.
Mr. Devoe.
Yay.
Glasgow.
Yay.
Mr. Kirk and all.
Yay.
Summer.
Yay.
The uh chair votes yea and this motion passes with the MSO. The next item on the agenda is the authority path has requested that the board approve stipulation of the authority in the South Carolina local government, that for it's a way of collectively investing assets. The generally higher rate of return, cities of Cleveland, Newberry, Orange County and Newberry County all participate in the investment pool. And we have a motion to authorize the authority to participate in the South Carolina local government investment. The way from Mr. Summer, is there a second? Second from Mr. Cook. Is there any discussion?
Put me here.
Okay.
Just a care, I see about how, I was trying to find our asset page, which shows the different funds. About how much money y'all considered putting in in there, is that a care?
I'm really would be lucky. They're they're in the CDs, that's anyway.
There it is.
The the last CD opened with a point zero three percent for this month. Just a little better rate, um, what was I do offer a viable place here is it does is not fully qualified on, but the the bank deposit.
So your open payment, which I see is about two point eight million dollars is worth, because from that pool, some amount.
Any other questions? Let the roll call vote, please answer with a yea, your name, when they call your name, Mr. Summer.
Yay.
Kirk and all.
Yay.
Mr. Glasgow.
Yay.
Mr. Devoe.
Yay.
Finn.
Yay.
Cook.
Yay.
Chair votes yea, the motion passes with the MSO. And I, when I saw this, I kind of questioned if we need to vote on this or not, because I know the city of Cleveland, North Carolina government, um, the city manager has complete authority on all investments, and I'm sure Newberry is the same way. Capital does.
In order to if they print it out.
I'm curious to know, in some of the city, city manager make all those decisions, and in fact, it's written into the all. I didn't know where I was. It's kind of that or
They were a lot of them, it's dusty, we're having to go.
God, he could even have, you know, bottles, I think, in the sky, they looked like they were done four years ago, so we might want to revisit that too. Okay, next item on the agenda is employee recognition. Okay, for the general manager, he recognized three of our employees for their work.
Thank you, sir. So uh, real quick, I'm just going to redo this, it's all messed up if I didn't kind of add this one. Uh, but I would like to express our thanks on behalf of the authority to Carl Sims, Brian Hall and Garrett Malcolm on their focus and dedication in providing our customers with the best service possible. In late January, staff mentioned here performed installation work at the home of Tina Page of Charles Street in Newberry. And Paige contacted management and spoke very well of these gentlemen and the work they performed at her performance. Her exact quote was that he was well pleased with the work that staff performed and the professional level they demonstrated while completing that work. Again, thank you to these gentlemen and thank you to our entire staff, those of you that are listening for the work that you continue to do on a day-to-day basis, greatly appreciated. Thank you.
Second discussion has been requested, that uh, one contractual matter regarding G I S mapping and one legal matter regarding standing G A board. Good motions entered executive session.
I'm moved.
Mr. Kirk and all with a second.
Second.
Second, Cook, giving an expression. Here now, I'll once again conduct a roll call vote. Please uh, please with a yea or nay response when they call your name. Summer.
Yay.
Mr. Kirk and all.
Yay.
Mr. Glasgow.
Yay.
Mr. Cook.
Yay.
Mr. Finn.
Yay.
Mr. Devoe.
Yay.
Chair votes yea and we are now in the next session. Return to open session, call the chair. On our call, it'll be March third, it will be in the city. Let's do very natural gas, and I can open session. The executive session, the board discussed one contractual matter regarding G I S mapping and one legal matter regarding the C N G A board. No action was taken. The board should take action on any items discussed in the executive session. Here in London, the next meeting will be April twenty-seventh in Newberry at six o'clock at the firehouse.
Let me reserve it, probably, it's probably
Okay. First, I believe, probably, it's going to be in Newberry. If there's no further business, we have the motion to adjourn.
I'm moved.
Motion for Mr. Glasgow, second from Mr. Devoe. Any discussion? Here in London, I'll conduct a roll call vote. Please answer with a yea or nay, when they call your name. Mr. Summer.
Yay.
Mr. Kirk and all.
Hey.
Mr. Glasgow.
Yay.
Mr. Devoe.
Yay.
Mr. Finn.
Yay.
Cook.
Yay.
The chair votes yea and this meeting is adjourned, thank you.